All right, well, welcome to the candidate forums for Whitefish Bay Village trustee and Whitefish Bay School Board. Thank you to our sponsor, The Bay Bridge, who you just heard from. My name is Julie Bowles and I will be your forum moderator this evening. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone in the audience to please turn off your camera and also turn off your microphone. For optimal viewing experience, you should probably be in speaker view in Zoom, in your Zoom settings, and that will highlight the current speaker. Also, the chat box will not be available this evening. So for the candidates, just to remind you to please stay muted unless you are the speaker, please keep your video on, remain on speaker view and have our timer hula and far pinned. All right, so the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan membership organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. As a nonpartisan group, the league never endorses a political party or candidate. It's important to be an educated voter, so we thank you for taking the time to learn about the candidates. We also welcome you to join the League of Women Voters, which despite its name, also includes many men as members. Questions for this candidate forum event were submitted prior to the forum by voters in the Whitefish Bay community. Thank you to everyone who provided questions. We fortunately had numerous submissions, but unfortunately, there were too many to present in the time allotted for the forums. Where possible, we have tried to combine the questions so we can cover as many topics as possible. Your candidate forum is being recorded and will be available to view in its entirety after March 13th on vote411.org and on the Bay Bridge, Wisconsin website. Tonight, we are presenting two forums. Our first forum is for Whitefish Bay Village trustee. The three candidates seeking election for village trustee are vying for two positions. On the ballot are Mr. Jacob Holler, Ms. Riza Colton, and Mr. Jay Saunders. The candidates have chosen to be addressed by first names. We will begin with 60-second opening statements from each candidate, followed by the questions with 90 seconds allowed for each answer. We'll then end with 60-second closing remarks. And lots were drawn to determine the order of speaking. The order of first response to a question will rotate among the candidates. Candidates, you will see a sign indicating when you have 30 seconds left to speak, 50 seconds left to speak, and when you must stop. Please honor the guidelines for the forum so we may make the best use of our time and this forum opportunity. So now let's begin with the opening statements. In 60 seconds or less, please share your opening comments. We will begin with Jay Saunders.
Thank you very much, Julie, and thank you to Bay Bridge, the League of Women Voters, for hosting this event tonight. Thanks to my opponents, Riza and Jacob, for wanting to be a part of the village board. And thank you to all of you who have tuned in for this. I think it is important that we have an educated, that we have educated voters. And I think that this is a fantastic opportunity to do that. Tonight, I hope that I will be able to, you know, give you some information about myself. You'll see that in the six years that I've been on the village board, I've seen everything from two times a month recycling to the partnership on the Cahill Ice Creek. And I'm looking forward to serving three more years for this outstanding community in which I've become completely invested. So thank you again to everyone involved.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to Jacob Holler.
So I want to start by just echoing Jay. Thank you to Bay Bridge and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this together. I think too often these smaller elections, they go unnoticed, or worse, they go uncontested. But my name is Jacob Howler. My wife and I moved our family to Whitefish Bay for the same reason everyone moves to Whitefish Bay. It's a beautiful community. We love it here, but it isn't perfect. We do have a few issues. We have minor issues like parking or the fact that it is really hard to find brunch in Whitefish Bay. We have some recurring issues like taxes and permitting processes. And we have some really big systemic issues like the environment and the fact that a lot of people simply can't afford to move to our community because of the price. Whitefish Bay has tackled big problems in the past, and tonight I'm going to be asking for your vote because I think we can do that again. Thank you.
And finally, Riza Colton. Oh, you're muted.
I knew someone had to do that today. Thank you to the League of Women Voters in Bay Bridge for sponsoring this event. And thank you to all of you for an active interest in village government and upcoming elections. Often, people do not engage in their local government and sometimes don't even know what it does. But in reality, our local government has a tremendous impact on the community and the quality of life of its residents. As a member of the village board, I plan to bring my many years of experience working in local government and public service, tackling big issues, building partnerships, and bringing people together to get things done. I also have a strong connection to this community. Having grown up in the North Shore, I love this community and am committed to ensuring its success. I think we can all agree that Whitefish Bay is a great place to live and raise a family. However, in these times of great uncertainty, we need to be proactive in addressing the challenges of today and tomorrow. These big challenges are complex, but we shouldn't shy away from tackling them. Whether it's revitalizing Silver Spring or downtown, in our downtown area, taking on environmental sustainability or confronting racial equity, we have to confront them head on. I know these things can only be accomplished by listening to and working with Whitefish Bay residents, and I commit to doing that as a member of the village board.
Great, thank you. Now we'll move to your questions submitted from the Whitefish Bay community. The sign will let you know when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. We'll begin with Jacob. And the first question is, "How do you intend to familiarize yourself with the details surrounding the most important issues in our community? And how will you incorporate all stakeholders' voices in decision-making?"
Yeah, so any community has a lot of gears turning at any given time. And I would continue what I'm currently doing. In the process of running, I am calling multiple people every week who are in positions where they're dealing with policy, where they're dealing with different issues. And I will just continue to talk to the residents of Whitefish Bay and find out what they need, what they think is important, and where they want to see their village go. There is a lot that needs to be done on the village board, and I think the residents are the best people to direct what gets done on the village board. So I'll continue to listen to them.
All right, thank you. We can move on to Riza.
Thank you. I think civic engagement is so important, especially on a board like this where we're largely all volunteering and providing our our passion and our skills to our community. I think every issue has to start with understanding how the residents feel about it. And there's a lot of different ways to do that, especially these days with technology. We can get creative knowing that everyone is busy and doesn't always have time to show up to a town hall. But I think it starts with understanding the issues. Talking to residents, how they experience them, seeing how other municipalities similar to Whitefish Bay approach them, and then coming up with solutions and different approaches to how to get things done. But I think it has to start with listening to residents from all walks of life in Whitefish Bay and understanding that deeply.
Thank you. And Jay, how do you intend to familiarize? How do you intend to familiarize yourself with the details surrounding the most important issues in our community? And how will you incorporate all stakeholders' voices in decision-making?
I think the short answer to that, Julie, is I have and I will continue to do so. I believe that communication with residents is absolutely the key on a local government level. I am very invested in not only my specific block, but the neighborhoods around me. I'm very invested in speaking with people at Cumberland Elementary, where my daughter is a fourth grader, through Whitefish Bay residents that attend my church. I'm constantly seeking out people from Whitefish Bay. And on the village side, village board, specifically, I've encouraged the development of communication, the weekly newsletter, and how that has evolved over the past few years. As a public relations professional, I believe communication is absolutely key. And I have always welcomed and will continue to welcome residents to stop me on the street or to email me on my trustee account. And I have been incredibly, incredibly welcome to that. And some of the best ideas and issues that we've come across and worked with on the board have come from one single email where someone says, hey, Jay, what is going on with this? And then it just kind of snowballs from there. So again, communication, as the others have said, are key, and we've done that. And I think we'll continue to do that over the next three years as well.
Great, thank you. So question two, we'll start with Riza. "How will you make decisions regarding board actions or policy changes to meet the needs of the entire Whitefish Bay community?"
Thank you. I, as chief of staff at Milwaukee County for six years, I had to make complicated decisions, complex decisions that affect many people. And I learned that starts again with understanding the issue, who it impacts. And there's a lot of good tools to do that, especially if you want to take racial equity into account in your decision-making, which I think is really important for every government to do. Next step is talking to residents and those affected and understanding their perspectives. And then from there, understanding what the options are, the pros and cons, and making the best decision based on those things, who it impacts people's perspectives. And of course, what the broader vision is, what you're trying to accomplish and making sure that decision you make is getting you closer, closer to your vision and your goal.
All right, thank you. So next to Jay.
And I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yes. "How will you make decisions regarding board actions or policy changes to meet the needs of the entire Whitefish Bay community?"
Well, my approach has been neighborhood-first. Whether it be the expansion of Whitefish Bay Little League, how that was going to impact the folks that live closest, you know, to that facility. Whether it was recently, the, you know, both at Cahill, both the baseball diamond and the ice rink. It was important to get that, you know, that neighborhood's input first. And now we're looking at the increase of the northeast side of Bay Shore and how that's going to impact, directly impact the neighborhoods surrounding, but up against Bay Shore Mall. For the broader sense, you know, I believe in taking the neighborhood-first approach, but then trying to figure out, you know, what is best for the community. Once the, for example, with the Cahill Ice Creek, once we squared away the concerns that neighbors had going into it, we had to then take into consideration what was going to be for the greater good of the community. And in that instance, it turned out that we had a nice setup at Cahill. And I think it was a fantastic thing for our community.
All right, thank you. And then finally, Jacob, how will you make decisions regarding board actions or policy changes to meet the needs of the entire Whitefish Bay community?
Yeah, you know, as an attorney who volunteers on the state bar with the Legislative Committee and the Public Interest Law Section and the Legal Assistance Council, I am very used to being in committees and making progress in that format. But the answer to the question itself, I think, is pretty simple. If you want input from the entire community, you just have to talk to the entire community. And you need to meet them where they are, whether that's next door app, Facebook, email, phone, out in the street, like Jay said. You just need to meet the people where they are and need to talk to them because you can't take into account the entire community unless you talk to the entire community. So that would be my focus, is to talk to the community.
Great, thank you. So question three is back to Jay first. "What is your understanding of racism and racial bias in Whitefish Bay? And how will you apply that understanding to your role as a village board member?"
I think that's that's a difficult question because I haven't, in Whitefish Bay, have not been directly affected by it. I think it's, and I think in this community, it would be tough, you know, for people to say that they've seen it, you know, the numbers speak for themselves when it comes to diversity in this community. It's just not, it's just not prevalent. From my understanding of racism, again, this comes from years, decades of listening, reading, trying to understand. I do understand that I am a Caucasian gentleman and I check all the boxes of what of what they call white privilege. My goal is to continue to learn and continue to understand and continue to listen. But I can't say that in the village of Whitefish Bay in my 12 years here that I have personally witnessed it.
Right, thank you. So we'll move on to Jacob. "What is your understanding of racism and racial bias in Whitefish Bay? And how will you apply that understanding to your role as a village board member?"
Yeah, I mean, it's not really a secret. Everybody calls us White Folks Bay. And that doesn't feel good when you hear that and you live in Whitefish Bay and you feel like you need to defend the village. But, you know, racism in this community is multifaceted. We had restrictive racial housing covenants in this village until 1958. People who were non-Caucasian were not allowed to live here until 1958. There's a policing problem of traffic stops that end in a citation. Thirty-two percent, almost a third of those citations are to black people, when less than 3% of our population is black. You know, there is, the last time I saw Whitefish Bay in the national news was when John Henson, the Milwaukee Buck, went to go buy a watch at Schlenke Castons, and he got the cops called him. And so I am also a white man who doesn't personally experience that, but I know it's a problem. And I know we need to start talking about it, and I think that's where I would begin. We need to do a deep dive and find out what the problem is, and there are not easy solutions. But talking to people is a good place to start.
Thank you. And Riza, what is your understanding of racism and racial bias in Whitefish Bay? And how will you apply that understanding to your role as a village board member?
I'll start by saying, I think racial bias and racial equity issues exist at every level of government. And Whitefish Bay is no different or special in that respect. I think every level of government, from its inception, was, had elements of racial disparities built into it, often unintentionally, but the impact was still there. I plan to bring my many years of experience working in Milwaukee County where we prioritize racial equity within that local government. And I want to bring that experience to the village board. Both what worked and sometimes what didn't work and what we learned from it, I think that's important also. And I can share a few things that I learned just from my experience there that I think might be relevant here. I think it's important to start with normalizing the conversation. Often, these are uncomfortable conversations for people, and there's often not a shared vocabulary. So I think also there's, we need to define a strategy or the strategy around racial equity needs to be defined, but we need to understand that it's a big, a complex question. And if it was easy, we would have solved it already. It's important to acknowledge mistakes will happen and we need to learn from them. Also, sorry, there's a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think somebody in the audience has their audio turned on. If everyone could just please check and turn your audio off.
Thank you.
Sorry, go on.
I guess the last thing I'll say is partnership is key. I mean, if you look at the village board, if you look at the staff, if you look at the residents of Whitefish Bay, it's overwhelmingly white. And we need to acknowledge the limitations of that and who's making decisions and how they're making that. And I think one way to get around that is to partner with others who are ahead of us, other municipalities, experts in this field, of which there are many, and bring them in to make sure we're thinking about this in the right way.
Great, thank you very much. And again, if everyone could just please double check to make sure your audio is muted, that would be helpful.
Just really quickly, it's Mr. Lang. Could you please mute your microphone? Thank you.
All right. So we're moving on to question four, and we'll start with Jacob. "Do you see any racial equity issues related to policing in Whitefish Bay? If so, how do you propose addressing such equity issues?"
Yeah, you know, I mentioned it a bit in the last question, that a third of all traffic stops that end in a citation in Whitefish Bay are issued to black drivers. And that does not begin to talk about traffic stops that don't end in citation, because we don't have those numbers. And in getting that information, it became apparent to me that it is very difficult to figure out exactly what our police department, who they police, what they police, and when they police. You know, they have done a lot of good things under Chief Young, de-escalation training, body cams. They worked with the marches this summer, and that was, they did a very good job with that. But getting information about how the police department operates is intentionally obtuse. It requires jumping through a lot of hoops to get that information. And I believe that information should be public. We pay the police department, and we pay the police department a lot of money. And I'm not saying we pay them too much money, but I am saying that we don't really know. And so I would like some more transparency, and I think that's where we start. We just lay the facts out there, and that way, when the police department is doing an excellent job, they can be applauded, and we can continue that process. And when they're doing something we disagree with, then, you know, we can take action. But I think it's important that the police department, their funding and how it's used is transparent for all residents of Whitefish Bay.
Thank you. Next is Riza.
So I think the issues at the intersection of policing and racial equity, again, are not unique to Whitefish Bay. They're national issues, as we all know. So I think it's important to have an approach that's collaborative and comes from a place of understanding each other. I think in municipalities that have approached this issue through blame and hostility, you often have a hard time making progress. So I think it starts with understanding each other and trying to build trust on both ends with the goal, of course, of making progress on the issue and the vision around racial equity. And I think some of the same principles have to be, have to apply around, you know, being proactive on the issue. The issues aren't going away that exist. And being proactive is generally better than being reactive and partnering with others who have addressed this effectively. And I think some of the things that have already been brought up around looking at data, being transparent with data, owning what it is currently, knowing it's not perfect, and we need to make progress. I think having a strategy around recruitment and retention of minority officers and having strategies around inclusion of those officers, feelings of inclusion within the police force is important. Continuous training is key on racial profiling, implicit bias, things like that. These are things that I think a lot of police departments are looking at. And Whitefish Bay should be a national leader on this and could be a national leader with the right people at the table.
Thank you. And finally, Jay, do you see any racial equity issues related to policing in Whitefish Bay? And if so, how do you propose addressing such equity issues?
Well, I'll take the second part of that question first, because we have, we are about to have an outstanding opportunity to change the narrative in Whitefish Bay. We're about to have a new police chief. Timing on that, I'm sure of, but Chief Young, who I believe has done a fantastic job, and I want to thank you very much for his service over the years, is retiring. And so the opportunity is there for us to make these changes, is, you know, starting now, whether it be, you know, through training, through recruitment, you know, through learning on their side, but this needs to be a community effort. This needs to be a community conversation. We need to know what is going on at village hall, and they need to know what's going on and the thoughts and opinions and the concerns from the people, from the people who live and work in the village. The village board has always had a very good relationship with the police department, with Chief Young. And I anticipate that will continue with whoever the next chief is. I think it is partially our responsibility to facilitate that conversation, that community conversation. But at the end of the day, that, like I said, that needs to be a collaborative effort between the police department and the people of Whitefish Bay and the village board.
Great, thank you. So question five goes first to Riza. "What environmental risks do you see for Whitefish Bay? What actions would you propose for the risks with the highest priority?"
Thank you, Sherman, muted. Thank you. Environmental sustainability is an important issue for me. I believe climate change is not a theoretical issue or political issue. As a village located on a great lake, we see Lake Michigan changing before our eyes, and that's only going to get worse. So climate change is a very real issue specifically for this village. And we have to treat it as a risk mitigation, risk mitigation strategy, not just, you know, a theoretical problem that we need to work through. And my approach is my approach with everything. I think we start by looking internally at the talent we have in Whitefish Bay, who has expertise in environmental sustainability and what kind of, and bring them to the table to really think about where do we want to be in 10, 20, 50 years as a village. This is another example of an issue where Whitefish Bay can really be a national leader and a role model for other municipalities to follow. I think we can look at things from the villages, the government's footprint, and how do we, what can be done there. There's a lot of options. And also, how can village support residents in their own efforts to be more sustainable? And so I think there's no shortage of options in terms of what works. We've seen these things work in other places. It's more about how do we prioritize and how do we leverage the limited resources we have in Whitefish Bay within the budget and look for external resources from private sources to bring in here so we can make some progress.
Okay, thank you. So next to Jay.
I think, you know, to Riza's point, obviously, first and foremost, looking at Lake Michigan, trying to, sorry, onshore up the shoreline. You know, there have been issues at Clody, issues that are going to, you know, continue. They're going to continue to get worse if something isn't done more than we already have done. You know, we have good partnerships with MMSD, with other, you know, with other organizations locally. Our Department of Public Works, I think, has done a good job trying to be proactive. Have some, one of the projects that they've done is that we approved with the solar panels over at DPW. But I think we also have an opportunity to, and an obligation to get outside of our borders. You know, while I'm all for trying to, you know, figure out who the best and brightest are in Whitefish Bay, I think we need to be looking to other municipalities that are similar to Whitefish Bay outside of, you know, outside of, you know, outside of Southeast Wisconsin, and see who's done what well, you know, what things have, what things have not gone well. And we need to, you know, as Riza pointed to, it's time to get a long-term, long-term strategy, because this is not a short-term fix.
Thank you. And Jacob, what environmental risks do you see for Whitefish Bay? What actions would you propose for the risks with the highest priority?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think it's pretty clear that the green issues, they don't really stay green issues. I think sometimes when you talk about a policy in terms of the environment, it gets kind of relegated to the second-class policy bin. But again, green issues don't stay green issues. You know, when Whitefish Bay kept on building bigger and bigger houses on small lots and the rain didn't have anywhere to go, we wound up having to spend millions of dollars converting Cahill into a runoff site. We're going to spend millions of dollars, well, I don't know if it's going to be millions, but we're going to spend a lot of money, you know, dealing with erosion on the shoreline and at Clody Park. I think there's just a lot of common sense policies that we could be enacting now. Jay mentioned the solar panels on top of DPW. They save the city $26,000 a year in electric. And if they work there, I have to believe they'd work on top of the library and on top of the high school, on top of the village hall and other public buildings. I think when fleet vehicles, you know, get to the end of their useful life, we look at electric. I think when we are planting or doing landscaping, we focus on native species of plants. I think we focus on reducing pesticides. I think there are a lot of things we can do, and I think we don't give ourselves enough credit. We are, we're a community that can make a big difference, not only in our own community, but as Riza said, as leaders, both in the state and nationally.
Great, thank you. So question six, now we start with Jay. Would you support formalizing the inclusion of environmental considerations as part of the process of approving construction projects and in all areas of village planning?
I think that is certainly a possibility. I also think that you have to take those on a case-by-case basis. It is something that we should be considering. It is something that our Department of Public Works leadership should be considering. But oftentimes, with, with those considerations will also come cost. And so, you know, this always, you know, comes down to the, you know, the, what frequently happens with, with green environmental situations is the, the cost versus benefit. If, if people are willing to, if people are willing to pay more or knowing that we're paying more for, for more environmentally friendly projects, or if they're willing to cut back in other areas, then yes, it's absolutely something we should be considering. If money is, if money is not an option, if money is an option, then, then it's, you know, then it's not something that, you know, we'll be able to, that we'll be able to do every single time. So the short answer is yes, but it needs to be on a case-by-case basis. It can't be a blanket, I don't think it can be a blanket statement based on all of the different projects that I've seen and over the past six years.
Sorry, next to Jacob.
Yes, I, I agree with Jay for the most part. I would say absolutely yes, if you're building a house or doing construction in this community. You know, no man's an island. Whitefish Bay is certainly not an island. What you do impacts your neighbors, and we need to be sure that you are impacting your neighbors and the environment that your neighbors occupy in a positive or at the very least a neutral way. I don't think it needs to be so restrictive that it prevents anybody from ever building a house here again. But Whitefish Bay isn't a huge community. I think we, it's something we could certainly accomplish on a case-by-case basis, and I'm for it.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Riza, would you support formalizing the inclusion of environmental considerations as part of the process of approving construction projects and in all areas of village planning?
So if we're talking about the use of public dollars, your dollars, I think they always have to be spent responsibly. And that includes environmental protections that protect this village. I think there's creative ways where often that could cost more, and there's creative ways where we can find the financing for that. There's many municipalities who are looking at different types of financing to, to make these things not cost more money. So absolutely, if it's public dollars, they need to be spent responsibly.
All right, thank you. So question seven, we'll start with Jacob. How do you propose we diversify the businesses along the Silver Spring corridor and attract more small businesses to our community?
Well, I'd start by saying some of that is already happening. The Business Improvement District is headed up by some really good people, and my understanding is there are some businesses moving in. But we need to be intentional about it. I mentioned in my opening that it's tough to find brunch around here. And it's no secret that most of the new developments in our community, they've been bank branches or something of that effect. And I do think places where people can eat and drink and socialize when it's safe to do so are important. That's an important part of the fabric of our community. And we have some good restaurants. We have some good places where people can meet, like the Bay and Fox Bay and Jack Pandles, et cetera. But I do think we need more of that. And, you know, I'm not a restaurateur, so I can't just magically make a bunch of restaurants appear on Silver Spring, but possibly some assistance for kitchen build-outs or some sort of grant program that could bring in young, fresh restaurateurs to our neighborhood. I just think it's important because far too often, people in Whitefish Bay, they go to Shorewood, or they go to Milwaukee, or they go to Glendale if they want to get dinner. And we need to save those dollars for us. I think we need to have those kinds of spaces, those destination spaces on Silver Spring. It's a fantastic part of town. It should be utilized more, and it should be set up in a way where people want to go there and they want to spend money.
Thank you. Next to Riza.
Yep, so this is probably the top issue that comes up as I talk to residents. And I can't blame them. Silver Spring is the downtown of Whitefish Bay. It's a place where people not only shop, but it's a place where people meet and gather and spend time together. It's the heart of Whitefish Bay. And no one can say that there is not an issue right now on Silver Spring with the vacant storefronts. And the businesses that are coming in, like banks, are not highly desired by residents. So I think this is another place where I is calling for a partnership. Business Improvement District has very intelligent people on it, and they're working on a strategic plan for addressing this head-on. But they probably can't do this alone. So partnership will be key with residents, the businesses, the village, and also bringing in experts and looking at communities who have done this before. There's a lot of different models around the country for how small local governments like Whitefish Bay can really make a difference here. And I think we should lay out a menu of options for, for these different models for residents and have a conversation about which one makes sense. I mean, even within Milwaukee County, we have everything from the way Shorewood approached it to the way Wawa Tosa approached it and everything in between. I think it's worth looking at, at every model, the pros and cons, and figuring out what makes the most sense for us in Whitefish Bay. And I, again, this is a place where I'm hoping to deploy some of my experience in bringing people together and working through issues like this.
Thank you. And finally, to Jay, how do you propose we diversify the businesses along the Silver Spring corridor and attract more small businesses to our community?
Well, first of all, I think the effort needs to be made to save Silver Spring. You know, right now, over the past year, we've lost businesses because of, because of the pandemic, and other businesses are struggling. You know, we've, we've lost Fox Bay, we've lost Panzies. We've, you know, we've lost others who, who have, who have closed or struggled because of the pandemic. As for diversification and recruitment, I should say, the money's there. We have, we have to district money that can be used for various grant programs. We, we use it right now. We've, you know, we've helped, we've helped to bring business, small businesses in. We've helped with, with the restaurants such as Moxie and Troubled Sons, that group. The money's there. If we can find ways to, to spend that in a productive and creative way, that's use it or lose it money. And I work, I am on the Community Development Authority, and I, so I know that it's possible. I know that it's there, but first we have to save Silver Spring. I don't want, and then, you know, there is a, there is a plan laid out right now. We need to execute it. I don't want to be shorewood, no offense to them, but we want, we need to make Silver Spring a destination again.
Julie, you're muted.
Sorry. So we'll move on now to our last question, and we'll start with Riza. Do you believe the lack of affordable housing is an issue in our community? If so, how do you plan to address this moving forward?
Yep, I think the lack of affordable housing is probably an issue in every municipality of Milwaukee County. And I think every municipality probably needs to find, find a different approach for how to, for how to address it. And I think this, this issue is also tied directly with, with racial equity and how we, we address issues like that. I don't think there's easy solutions, again, because we would have found them already and implemented them if they existed. So I think it's, again, same approach as everything else. How do we bring people together to have a conversation and make sure there's some shared values around affordable housing? This can become a very controversial topic for, for small communities. So it's important to have a very public dialogue about why it's important and why it's important to have residents' support around it. And then, and then look what's worked, look, look at what's worked for other communities. There's a lot of models that can be tried and learned from what, what others have done. I think we can use, like, you know, Shorewood did recently, the, the improvement districts where they're expanding them to fund affordable housing. I think there's a lot of different models that, that are out there that have been shown to work, but we have to find what works here. And I think that starts with understanding how residents think about this and, and having a public dialogue about it.
Thank you. So next is Jay.
Yes, but I think is the, is the, the short answer to that. I say, yes, it's a problem, but it's not like we have a lot of untapped land in the, in the village, which, which feeds into that problem. If, you know, the, the areas of the village that are zoned are very specifically zoned, and it's, if, if we're going to, if we're going to make changes to try to make affordable housing more obtainable in Whitefish Bay, there are going to have to be some big sacrifices made. I don't know exactly, you know, what those are, but again, we're, we're restricted based on, based on our square footage and based on the fact that pretty much every square foot is spoken for. So what I love to see a more diverse approach to this, yes, but it's going to, like I said, the sacrifices will need to be made by the entire village. And I'm open to the conversation, would completely welcome it and would love ideas and love to explore that. But like I said, it's, that, that's a difficult ask for, for a place like Whitefish Bay.
Thank you. And finally, Jacob, do you believe the lack of affordable housing is an issue in our community? And if so, how do you plan to address this moving forward?
Yeah, I think it's a large issue. People want to live in Whitefish Bay. It means we're doing something well, and that's a good thing. But way too many people are priced out. And I personally think whenever you have a demand problem, it generally requires a supply solution. I think that's about as simple an economics problem as you have. Best way to fix demand is with supply. Now, what has been previously said is correct. We don't have a lot of open plots of land in Whitefish Bay. So I think we need to be very intentional when they do come up. You know, on the corner of Silver Spring and Marlboro recently, church was torn down. A large plot of land came open, and developers are putting seven million dollars, or seven individual million-dollar-plus condos on that site. And it's really good that seven new families are going to get to move here, and I have nothing against expensive condos. I would love to live in one. But that could have been a lot more people from a lot more backgrounds, from a lot, from a much more varied pool of people. And now, you know, it's, it's going to be seven buildings on the corner. I think we need to look at creative solutions like Shorewood's tax-inferred district or tax incremental financing that they're doing for affordable housing. I think we need to look at incentivizing, expanding the apartments in the Henry Clay neighborhood, Henry Clay. We need to look at accessory dwelling units. I think we need to look at allowing people to rent out places like Carriage Houses. I think we need to look at all of the surface lots, parking lots that the community has, and see if we can't do something to not only increase parking, but also increase access to housing.
Thank you. So now we will have-
Is it possible for me to, to say something in regards to what you said on-
Well, you can say something in your closing comments. So, thank you. Which we will now begin. So we now have 60 seconds for each candidate's closing comments, and we will begin with Jay.
Thank you again, Julie, and I, we really appreciate the opportunity. I think that the Whitefish Bay is in a very good place. We've, we've gone through, in my, in my six years on the village board, we've gone through a massive transition in leadership from what used to be a scandalous village government and village leadership to one that, that moves and works very smoothly. The board has a great relationship with village manager and vice versa. We've put, we've put great leaders in place in all of our departments. We have, we've done great work on projects from, from infrastructure to community, to community benefit. The work isn't done. That's why I'm running again for another three-year term. The work isn't done. I want to be a part of that work. I've been, like I said, I've invested myself in this community. I've been here 12 years now. It is home, and I want to keep doing the good work that we've done over the past six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob.
Yeah. I mean, I love this village. I love that I get to live here. I love that my children get to grow up here. It's a really good place to live, but we aren't perfect. We are perfect. So I do think we have work to do. I think we have work to do for our children. I think we have work to do for the grandchildren. And I think we have work to do for the other communities around us that see us as a leader. So if you are willing to do the work, I am asking for your vote. And I'm asking that you help get me on the village board so we can just get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Riza.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, Bay Bridge, and all of you. As you can see, we're all passionate about the community we live in and we love. I believe what separates me is my experience in tackling these big issues and bringing people together. Some of the challenges we talked about today, whether it's racial equity, environmental sustainability, or revitalizing our downtown, it may seem daunting, and they are. And while no one has the answers to these tough questions, I believe what I have is the experience necessary to help Whitefish Bay move forward. I look forward to working with all of you and serving my community to ensure Whitefish Bay continues to be a great place to live. If you'd like to learn more, I have a website that has my bio and some of the issues I care about. It's www.coultonforwhitefishbay.com. I would truly appreciate your support and hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the village trustee portion of our forum event this evening. Thank you very much to the community for their questions. And thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum and running for the office of village trustee. Thank you to each of you, Mr. Jacob Haller, Jacob Haller, Ms. Riza Coulton, and Mr. Jay Saunders. So we'll now pause for a few moments before we move on to the Whitefish Bay School Board candidate forum. So we'll now pause for a few moments before we move on to the Whitefish Bay School Board Candidate Forum. So for for those in the audience, the school board forum will be beginning at eight o'clock, so in about five minutes. The forum for Whitefish Bay School Board. So before we begin, I would like to remind everyone in the audience again to please turn off your camera and turn off your microphone. For optimal viewing experience, you probably would like to be in speaker view and the Zoom options. And the chat room will not be available tonight. To the candidates, I'd like to remind you to please stay muted unless you are the speaker. Please keep your video on, remain on speaker view, and have our timer fueling far pinned. Questions for this candidate forum were also submitted prior to the forum.
It's me, Julie.
Yes.
And he has some opening remarks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ann.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you, Julie. And I'm altering my opening remarks a little bit to reflect the fact that I understand some people are having trouble getting into the forum at the beginning. That has been rectified, so we apologize. After a frantic call to Zoom to find out why they didn't give us the increased capacity that we paid for. The rest of you were let in. So thank you for your patience on that. I'm Anne O'Connor, and on behalf of my Bay Bridge co-facilitators, Jen Coop Olsta and Kathy Werzer. And all of our Bay Bridge volunteers, we welcome you to tonight's forum. Bay Bridge is a nonpartisan volunteer-led group of residents advocating for racial and social unity and equity in our community. Bay Bridge is grateful for this opportunity to work with the League of Women Voters to offer this fair and open discussion with candidates prior to the April election. All questions used tonight came from you, the residents of Whitefish Bay. And were solicited through multiple outlets. Like the newsletters of the Whitefish Bay Village, the Merchants of Whitefish Bay, the Whitefish Bay Library. And our own Bay Bridge newsletter, which we invite you to subscribe to using this link, baybridgewisconsin.org. We also invite you to attend our next event on April 21st. A discussion of the film Teach Us All, which is a documentary raising issues in education. A link to view the film will be available one week prior to April 21st. And the registration link is also available on our website at baybridgewisconsin.org. Thank you to the candidates for not only being willing to participate in this forum tonight, but for being willing to serve our community. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for moderating and ensuring fairness throughout tonight's event. And thanks to you, the constituents, for taking part in this democratic process and for being here tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So questions for this candidate forum were submitted prior to the forum by voters in the Whitefish Bay community. And thank you to everyone who provided questions. As mentioned previously, we were fortunate to have numerous submissions. So where possible, we have tried to combine the questions so we can cover as many topics as possible. Your candidate form is being recorded and will be available to view in its entirety after March 13th. On votefouroneone.org and on the Bay Bridge, Wisconsin website. We have five candidates vying for three positions on the school board. On the ballot are Ms. Anne Kearney, Mr. Joe Ketchum, Ms. Sandy Saltstein. Mr. Daniel Tyke and Ms. Pam Woodard. Our format will be the same as our previous forum. We'll begin with 60-second opening statements, 90 seconds allowed to answer each question. And then we will end with 60-second closing remarks. We will rotate which candidate answers the questions first. You will see a sign indicating when you have 30 seconds left to speak. 50, 15 seconds left to speak and when you must stop. Please honor the guidelines for the forum so we may make the best use of our time for this forum opportunity. Let's begin with our opening statements. In 60 seconds or less, please share your opening comments. Again, our signs will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. We will begin with Sandy Saltstein.
Thank you, Julie. I'm Sandy Saltstein. I want to take this opportunity to thank Bay Bridge. And the League of Women Voters for organizing the forum this evening, giving us an opportunity to. Talk about important issues before the school board and what matters to the community. I'm finishing my sixth year on the school board and also the end of my second year as president. And I chose to run after what has been a very challenging year. I don't think there's any other way to say it. Because I am committed to continue serving the community, and I have an interest in education and ready to do the work of recovery and renewal following the pandemic. I also recently began working in the state legislature, and I've had an opportunity to learn more about public policy and educational policy at the state level. And expanded the number of constituents that I'm serving. My husband and I have lived in Whitefish Bay for 20 years, and I have two children at the high school. And I'm looking forward to learning from my fellow candidates this evening and having a good conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Joe Ketchum.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Bay Bridge for putting this together. I'm Joe Ketchum. I was born and raised in Whitefish Bay. I went away to school and came back to start a career here. I've had a career as a professional violinist and music educator for over 25 years. About five months ago, I saw a video on the internet put together by a high school student in Canada. It was extremely heartbreaking. It showed just exactly what our policies towards schools have done over the course of the last year. As far as the distress that has caused our children, I firmly believe that it is time to open schools five days a week. And keep open minds.
All right. Thank you. So next is Dan Pike.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you to the sort of echoing, we're probably gonna hear tonight. Thank you to Bay Bridge and the League of Women Voters for putting this together. Obviously, thank you to all the constituents who are joining as I'm seeing numbers go up in the participant list. It means a lot. It's obviously a very challenging year to, you know. Get anybody together for anything other than, any other way than Zoom. I know it's nice to hear information from the candidate, and I really. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with the community. I've been fortunate to get a number of emails since saying I was gonna run and. Respond to those and give my feedback about some of the, some of the things that are on people's minds, but. This is definitely a great forum to be able to continue that conversation. So I chose to run. I'm like Joe, a lifelong resident of Whitefish Bay. I have two kids in the elementary school and have seen things sort of evolve since I first lived in the village. And I think I have an opportunity to. Start to steer the ship in the right direction. And much like Sandy said, it's been a tumultuous year, and I think. I potentially could be the right candidate to help you get things back in the right direction and find normal, whatever that is.
Thank you. Next is Anne Kearney.
Good evening. I am a school board member who cares. I care about students who are at the heart of all we do at the district. I care about providing a first-rate education so that these students can succeed in whatever they want to do. I care about students and teachers and families feeling safe in their learning environments during the pandemic and as we move out of the pandemic. And I care about our families feeling connected to the district. That is why I'm running for reelection. I want to continue making a difference for our students. My husband and I have been lucky to have children educated in the district. And to see how caring teachers and leaders make anything possible, even college for a child with special needs. My experience on the board and my attorney skills, the ability to ask questions, to listen, to foster dialogue, all add value. And this will help with facing the challenges and making the most of the opportunities coming for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Pam Woodard.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Pam Woodard, and thank you to Bay Bridge and the League of Women Voters. Like so many others, we moved to Whitefish Bay for the schools. We've raised three children here, and now we continue to live here because it's a great community. My kids are now alumni and raising their own children. It was my commitment to education and my background in public administration that drew me to board service many years ago. I am an experienced school board member and a past president for nine years. I led the board through change and challenge, so this, this new year is nothing new to me. Focusing on decisions on positive student outcomes. We have had increased opportunities for all students, updated and expanded facilities. Long-term fiscal viability for our school district. My experience goes beyond the district level, serving in the library board, regional advocate for education issues. And statewide promoting character education. My service has been and will continue to be grounded in my core belief. That every child in our school must have the opportunity to grow to his or her potential and feel safe and supported. Thank you.
Now we'll move to your questions submitted from the Whitefish Bay community. Signs will let you know when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. So the first question, we'll start with Joe, and the first question is. What motivates you to run for a seat on the school board?
What motivates me to run for a seat on the school board? Is my son, who is a junior at Whitefish Bay High School, and his friends. And what I've seen happen to them over the course of our policy over the last year. Of continuing to keep schools closed. And using a hybrid model instead of five days a week, like so many schools have done. I think the social isolation has been devastating to them. And I can't even imagine what has happened to the younger children. I firmly believe that all the metrics indicate. That the virus. Has peaked. It peaked in mid-November. Today's numbers show a seven-day positive test percentage of 2%, which is the lowest recorded. Positive percentage it has been since data has been recorded on this. That is from the Wisconsin DHS website. And there is absolutely no reason to not have our children in schools five days a week. In addition to the overall metrics of the virus. Data indicates the children are not good vectors of the virus. And actually, the safest place for children to be as far as getting the virus or spreading the virus is in schools. And I think it's long overdue for us to have five-day in-person education for the future of our children.
Thank you. We'll move next to Dan.
Thanks, Julie. I I'm motivated to run. I had actually considered running. In the the last school board election and the timing with young kids just wasn't right. My wife at home sort of thought that I was crazy to think about it at the time with young kids, and. I I sort of reined it back, but I think the time is right. It's been a. It's been extremely, like I said in my opening statement, a tumultuous year. And I think we have great opportunity. I'm despite the uncertainty of the last year and the lack of normalcy. I think we're looking forward and I have great optimism looking into the next several years and beyond for our kids. And honestly, for our community, there's a lot has happened beyond the pandemic in the last year with racial, you know, social justice, racial inequity. There's going to be a funding challenge ahead as we sort of come out of this pandemic. And I'm excited by those challenges and what lies ahead and what we can do for the community as a whole. I think there's great opportunity. We've learned a lot about mental health. And that has sort of come to the forefront and the village is starting to try to do things to look at some of the, they have an opportunity with a police chief. We have an opportunity in our schools to look at some of the racial inequities and just equity in general. And really looking forward to trying to capitalize on some of the, the things we've learned in the last year and sort of start anew. And I'm excited to be a part of that.
Thank you. And next to Anne, what motivates you to run for a seat on the school board?
I am motivated to run for reelection because I really think I can add value and do more. I think there is a need for all of us as a community to come together, our school community and our larger community on a lumber of issues. Not everybody agreed during this time period about how a lot of things should go. But certainly, everybody can agree that our district should be student centered. And that much can be done to ensure that that continues to be the case. I'd like to think that the experience I've had, I've been a past president too of the school board, as well as my outside experience, community service and my, my professional experiences can help kind of foster this dialogue that we need and, and build consensus around reaching resolution. So that we can again, make sure that our work is student centered.
Thank you. Next to Pam.
Thank you. I'm running for reelection because we have work to do. It was a challenging year. I think we worked really hard to listen to all stakeholders, to listen to the science. But the pandemic is, is not going away. But it is in a manageable state. Our teachers are getting vaccinated. Our students are soon in, in person most days in another week. So I believe and we're maintaining a virtual option, but that's not what the future is for our schools. Before this year, our schools were really strong. They still are strong. This was a year of turbulence, but we have learned so much. It was a transformational year in terms of employing technology. And I look forward to the challenges. I think it's a really important time to be there to help guide, deal with the, the business piece of the school district. But the learning piece and moving us forward to be an even stronger district is a place I want to be. I believe that my background will help me with that. Our teachers have learned so much this year about technology. Our students and our families have learned a lot about their own learning styles. I think that what we will do moving forward will be incredibly exciting. And it's, there's a really bright future for improved learning and new dynamism in our school and education system.
Thank you. And finally, Sandy, what motivates you to run for a seat on the school board?
So what motivated me to run for reelection was in part that it was a really, really difficult. It was really difficult to picture walking away right now. As you know, the, the fellow school board members have alluded to, it has been a really, really challenging year. And we are still in the middle of the story of the pandemic. I like to think that we're, you know, maybe past the middle and, and toward the renewal and recovery. And, and after all of the challenges of the year to have had a conversation last night that included looking forwards, that included, you know, returning to five day a week school in the fall. And looking at the mental health challenges and the educational challenges that our team members, our administrators are already planning for. And being a part of that planning, that process to go to the next step, building on the experience of knowing what our district was like and how it ran pre-pandemic. And then being able to take that knowledge forward. It's just really hard to think about not being a part of that work. And so I decided to run for reelection.
Thank you. So we'll move on to question two, and this one will go to Dan first. How do you intend to familiarize yourself with the details surrounding the most important issues in our schools? And how will you incorporate all stakeholders' voices, including students, in decision making?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I, I think as I've listened to the school board meetings over the last several months, at times I've been heartbroken whether students agreed or disagreed with my position on the, the health and safety and where we should be with how many days we should be open. Or whether we were discussing just a couple of school board meetings ago, some of the racial inequities and the lack of comfort that some of our students felt. And I, I think that, you know, as we look at the issues ahead of us and try to determine, you know, what, what is most important and how we engage the community. Some of that engagement has already started with, like I said, people emailing. I know the school board's been overwhelmed by emails, but getting out into the community and making ourselves available. And I think one great way to do that is to bring the school board and the village board together. And really as a village, because the school is truly a part of our community. And let people come to an open forum or a town hall where it's simply, you know, sometimes the school board meetings I've found it's frustrating because there's the public comment section and obviously that's how public meetings have to run, but there, there isn't that dialogue back and forth. So finding, especially as we come out of the pandemic, ways to engage people hopefully in person, safely or through mediums like this where everybody has an opportunity, including the Black Student Union and some of our other clubs to, to feel welcome to just openly share their thoughts.
Thank you. Next to Anne.
We have been, as school board members, getting a lot of emails from people. And that has been really helpful for us to get information. But I think probably passively getting the information is not good enough. I personally am going to be very happy when Sendex is the place to be again for a lot of people because that's where we get a lot of people telling us. So, you know, as we heard from, I think the village board candidates going out into neighborhoods, talking with our neighbors, talking with people who don't necessarily agree with us to hear what they would like us to do moving forward. I think one of the things I have learned during the pandemic is how important it is to hear student voices. It's been really powerful and impactful for us when we have heard student voices and comments. And so I think that sort of, you know, there has to be an appropriate reach out to students. But certainly, making students feel welcome to give their opinions will be really important. And I think that having the opportunity when weather is better to kind of attend some of the functions that I hope will be able to have in the village, the Civic Foundation, doing their functions and, you know, having the band play, all of those things, I guess, will hopefully give us more opportunities to connect with people. And, and people feeling comfortable having people reach out to them. So I look forward to not just getting information, but reaching out and getting more information.
Thank you. So next to Pam, how do you intend to familiarize yourself with the details surrounding the most important issues in our schools? And how will you incorporate all stakeholders' voices, including students, in decision making?
I have always been someone who has reached out and been a good listener, been approachable and available so that anyone who would like to reach me can discuss issues. But that's not enough. But being, being a good listener is, is key. I believe we have heard a lot of voices and it has been really powerful to realize and to know. And what you believe was that people care in the community, they care about the issues. So I will listen. I believe that our school board meetings have been accessible. So people are hearing our conversations. Public comment is probably frustrating for people, but that's driven by open meetings laws. Coming out of the pandemic, I believe that maybe, maybe, I think there are many reasons that we will need to have some big community engagement, small groups, large groups over issues about particularly on racial equity. In the past, when there were building projects, we did public hearings. I think we just have to keep listening. We have to keep trying to find ways. The other piece is to make sure that our organization, the schools, are a place where people can engage in communication and feel safe at all levels of building levels. And that the information flows freely so that we all hear student and teacher and community and parent voices.
Thank you. So next to Sandy.
So I too would say that we do have opportunities coming up. Again, both around the pandemic, the conversation around racial equity and justice to have opportunities for greater community engagement going forward. And I echo what we've heard, you know, public comment is is hard because it's not a dialogue. And I think that we do need to create some other space for dialogue with the board and for building understanding about what's happening in the community. So I think that those opportunities will be coming. And also hearing from our teachers, our staff members has been very important during the pandemic. Another place that I want to continue to explore and get some information from our teachers about what the impact of this year has been. Learning what sorts of things, we've talked a little bit at the board level about what things we might want to carry into the future from our pandemic learning. And some of the skill sets, some of the things that our teachers have learned and developed. So I think that's another opportunity for some of, some of our community engagement, some of our learning to happen. As we're considering decision making going forward into the fall.
Thank you. And finally, Joe, how do you intend to familiarize yourself with the details surrounding the most important issues in our schools? And how will you incorporate all stakeholder voices, including students, in decision making?
I was proactive in finding out information about the most important issue facing our schools, which was if we were going to have schools, which we did not. And right from the start, at least at the beginning of September this year, it's understandable when schools were shut down last year because we didn't have a lot of data and information about what was going on. But it was clear in September that we should have been open five days a week. And a lot of the things that we are going to be dealing with in the future are a direct result of our policy choices on that. As far as racial inequality, we have exacerbated that. Because in the school building, everyone has equal access to the building. They don't all have equal access to the internet or quality, quality internet, quality computers. We've exacerbated that. As far as mental health issues, virtually all of them were caused by our policy of having schools closed. As far as moving into the future, I'm open to students, the community, everyone. And I'm very familiar with the data and that is what has made me so passionate about pushing to have schools open five days a week.
Thank you. So now we'll move to question three and we'll start with Anne. What is your understanding of racism and racial bias in Whitefish Bay? And how will you apply that understanding to your role as a school board member?
So with regard to racism and racial bias, I, I agree that there is systemic racism in so many institutions. In our schools, work is already being done to ensure that there aren't barriers to learning. A lot of the work that's being done to ensure that any sort of disciplinary work that's being done is done equitably. And really, the work from the academic side has been, as it should always be, to ensure that each student has what he or she needs to do their very best, to reach their potential. And that work is ongoing, but obviously there's always more to be done. Where I think some of the emphasis we're talking about now is coming and rightfully so is how does the school and the community together work on culture, work on the biases that, you know, exist in schools, exist in our legal system, exist in how people interact every day. And there I think we need to have all of these comings together so that we can have conversations, so we can have, as we've talked about already, have conversations in smaller groups and larger groups so that communities can work together. I do think the schools have a really important role in this, but I don't think it's the only role. I think that we have to continue making sure that our curriculum is culturally appropriate. Those questions are being asked, those texts are being looked at, those conversations are being had, and I think more will happen.
Thank you. Next to Pam.
Thank you. Well, that's, that is the big question. That is the, the big thing that we all need to deal with. And racism is, is a problem in society. It's not just for Whitefish Bay schools or Whitefish Bay community, but we have a role to play. We have been, I think we will be working to address it. But I would say that it's not a new issue. I think Whitefish Bay has been, schools have been working to respect diversity and embrace it and work to provide equity and education for all students. It's ongoing work. We have not arrived. It requires educated, effective, effective teachers, a good curriculum. And the resources, we are providing those. The pieces we need to continue to work on is providing a safe environment that supports students that are of color and that we also need to begin a bigger, more impactful community engagement on this issue. I don't have the answers, but I have the willingness. I believe it's urgent work. So I, we need to do it with partners. We can't do it alone. And it will be ongoing.
Thank you. Next to Sandy, what is your understanding of racism and racial bias in Whitefish Bay? And how will you apply that understanding to your role as a school board member?
So I, I think as, as has been said, we are looking at this really carefully and really thoughtfully. I attended a workshop earlier this week where they talked about in, in doing the, the work of equity, what is, what is my attitude toward equity? What is my knowledge that I have about equity and what, what skills do I have to increase equity? And I've been reflecting on those questions. I, I know that my attitude is a willingness to, to bring change. I think the knowledge is still developing and the skills are still developing for me personally to be able to know how I can help facilitate that, but my willingness is there. And I think from our most recent board conversation, I feel like there is a lot of willingness on the district level as well. As Pam and Anne have said, I think there's a lot of work that has been done toward removing barriers to learning for students, for all students within the district, in terms of the academics, in terms of the culture, in terms of a sense of belonging. And in terms of communication and transparency and, you know, looking for that kind of community work and community building. I think that's where we have work to do and I look forward to having an opportunity to participate in that work going forward.
Thank you. Next to Joe.
Racism in Whitefish Bay is like racism anywhere else. It's a problem because it keeps people apart. In order to bring people together, we actually have to bring people together. Our policies of keeping children away from school, again, have been inequitable in the access to education that minorities and lower income students have had. It was a direct result of our closed school policy. Another way to bring people together outside of the classroom is through extracurricular activities, which have also been severely inhibited, including band, orchestra, and athletics. If we truly want to create understanding between people and equity between people, we have to treat people like people. We have not done that over the course of the past year. We have created an environment of fear, children afraid of their parents, parents afraid of the children, children afraid of children afraid of teachers, teachers afraid of children. Everyone was looked at as a vector of some sort of disease rather than a human being. Until we can see people as human beings again, trying to address racism is futile.
Thank you. And finally, Dan.
Yeah, I think back to an earlier answer I had, I've been doing a lot of self-searching and sort of soul finding as I listened to families a couple of board meetings ago. And that's not to say, obviously, with the events of the summer that, you know, the the racial equity issue wasn't at the forefront. But I've, it's been so much more apparent to me, listening to the stories. And what I can tell you is I have a lot to learn and a lot to do to understand about racial equity. And, and I'm willing to do that work, much like the other board members said, that we have a lot to learn. It's no secret. We're all Caucasian people buying for this board. And you're going to have a board of, of white citizens of Whitefish Bay. And so we have a lot to learn and a lot to do to understand what our, our community members of color feel. But to walk away from the meeting that we heard a couple of weeks ago, just heartbroken and like literally beside myself, that families in our community who are supposed to be part of our community don't feel like they are. Some of them live here and some of them don't. But when we invite them into our school, they are part of our community. So I think we have opportunities with mental health and some surveys. I was made aware that the village, or I'm sorry, the, the school has decided not to partake in the past in the youth, youth risk behavior survey that CDC puts out and runs through DPI. And I think there's an opportunity to really gather student data from there and find out where students are at and the, what they feel and what we can do to help them along the way.
Thank you. So question four, we'll start with Pam. Do you believe racial equity should be a priority for our school district? If not, why not? And if so, what would prioritizing racial equity look like?
Racial equity is a priority in our school. I would say equity is a priority of our school. Racial equity is a piece. I think we need to put a bigger spotlight on the racial equity. But our schools are working hard to ensure that all students can learn. They're given the support they need to achieve. That's academic equity that is for, you know, people that have been marked, people, black people. It is for regardless of race or gender or whatever your ability is, we want to elevate all students to learn their best. I think that the racial equity piece is, it is listening, learning. I, I don't know what it looks like in, 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 in an experiential way because I am a white woman. But I believe we need conversations. We need to listen to student voices. We need to create opportunities in our curriculum and to make, ensure that we have rich literature for that. This work is being done, but I think that it probably needs to be accelerated. So I think we just need to look through all levels of our, of our learning and our system to, to do a better job. But, but we need to listen, we need to learn. And I don't have the answers, but I'm open. And I do believe the work is urgent.
Thank you. Next to Sandy.
Would you mind repeating the question, Julie?
Sure. Do you believe racial equity should be a priority for our school district? If not, why not? If so, what would prioritizing racial equity look like?
So I do believe it should be a priority. It, you know, as is, is part of our agenda from, you know, we had the meeting in February, will be part of our agenda in our meeting next week. And I think that it is important work. We do, as I said, kind of need to, to, well, at the board level, I think we have been making an effort for some time to look at our policies with an equity lens. But when I say that, I too acknowledge that we do not have a lot of diversity on our board. And so, fine tuning that equity lens and continuing to build our understanding of what that means from a policy perspective and what that means as we get reports and as we get our host school reports from the schools, which often have a focus on their efforts around equity and their goals around equity. You know, we, we do have equity work going on throughout the district. But then, as I said, it's, it's sharpening that lens, it's prioritizing the work within the work of racial equity, which is, I think, the, the mission that the board is on right now, to really formulate what that looks like for the district and what that looks like, just continuing, as I said, to, to sharpen that lens and really consider equity and, and spotlight racial equity in the work that we're continuing to do.
Thank you. Next to Joe.
Racial equity in school should be a priority, but in order to achieve that, you have to have races in school. Our policies have divided our students by geography and access to education. I think it's pointless to discuss any progress towards racial equity or addressing questions or problems or concerns of equity within the school when we don't have students within the school five days a week. And it's just, it seems rather pointless to discuss addressing issues if you have people talking or attending class on a, on a computer screen. It doesn't make any sense. If we are going to bring our kids together and try and teach them things that certain children are doing wrong or systemic things that are wrong, you can't address those until you really have a traditional school environment.
Thank you. Next to Dan, do you believe racial equity should be a priority for our school district? If not, why not? And if so, what would prioritizing racial equity look like?
Yeah, I absolutely think that it needs to be a priority of the district. And that, that's not to say that there aren't other priorities out there, too. Again, we have a lot of work to do to gain some of our students back that went to other places during the pandemic. But we, if I'm elected to the board, and even if I'm not, I think the board needs to develop accountable and measurable goals for themselves to work towards. And I know that a couple of weeks ago, we heard that the plan was just to continue putting it on the agenda and continue the conversation. And while that's good, I think we have an opportunity, like you heard from some of the, the village candidates as well for village trustee, we have an opportunity to listen to the community and to invite our students that aren't from Whitefish Bay but are part of our community, so that they feel like they're part of our community, to come to that town hall type environment and be able to just share and have a conversation and honestly let us learn some things. I think there are opportunities to reach out to equity and subject matter experts in racial equity and find out because we're not, you know, I think everybody said, we're maybe not the right people to know everything there is to know. So bringing those people in, but we need to be urgent and intentional about setting measurable goals that are quantifiable, that we can follow through and be accountable to. And I think there are, there's low hanging fruit that we can handle with extracurriculars, making students who maybe don't participate, participate in extracurriculars because they don't have a way to get picked up from it. Those are low hanging fruit, the things that the district has bans and we can address very easily. So I definitely think we need to make it a priority.
Thank you. Finally, Ann.
I do think it should be a priority. We have as the board, one of our goals is to work on equity, continue working on equity and racial equity itself as a part of that. All of us have a journey that we're on in this, our personal journey of learning. I think you heard from Riza, the normalizing piece is still ongoing, I think, for everyone in our community. And we hear from the experts that that's a really important part. What you're hearing from the school board is also, we need to hear other voices. And we understand that. I really think that some sort of facilitator, a consultant, an expert helping us is really going to be important, whether that expert is going to facilitate conversation, whether that expert is going to help us get external materials, whether it's going to be somebody who allows us to do strategic planning around this. I think that's all going to be important. One of the things we struggled with as a board was, do we break out equity as itself a set aside or set alone goal? And that was because having equity in our schools, racial equity is so important that it really does pervade everything. And it should because it really is, if, if we have equity, then all of our students will learn better. And so I think, and all of our students will be better citizens of the world that they're going to be in. So it is very important. But I do think it's a journey. And, and we have a lot going on to try and figure out how best to not just start that journey, but continue it in a sustainable way. Having goals will be great, but we really need to make sure that those goals can be put into place and acted upon. And, and we need time and we're working on that.
Thank you. So question five, we'll start with Sandy. Do you have long-term goals and strategies for increasing the overall diversity among the student body and the employees in the district? And if so, what are they?
I think that is something that I would also see as a goal of the work that the board is engaged in right now. I think the, the question about long-term goals for diversity, it was interesting to hear about those in the village forum as well, in terms of the diversity of the Whitefish Bay community overall. And I think that this is a, a topic for some ongoing conversation as far as what that, that goal setting might look like, what we could do for the community to ensure that diversity. And I also, I want to take just a moment and, and no, you know what? I'm, my time is good. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Next to Joe.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Do you have, do you have long-term goals and strategies for increasing the overall diversity among the student body and the employees in the district? And if so, what are they?
Well, I think in order for diversity to be achieved, the school has to be open. As far as increasing diversity of students, long-term for in physical learning, in-person learning, it depends on the makeup of the community. And I don't think the makeup of the community is in the realm of the school board. There are a certain number of students that can be transported in. But I think historically, community schools where children live in the community have been proven most successful. And that has worked for Whitefish Bay with the combination of the 220 program and people from outside the district. But I think if we focus too much on bringing people from outside the community, I think that's more of a village trustee thing. If they would like to change the socioeconomic makeup of Whitefish Bay to reflect more diversity, then we will have more diverse schools. But I think we harm children by taking them out of their neighborhoods into a foreign environment like Whitefish Bay. There is, there is a positivity to diversity, but I don't think that the school board's role is to try to achieve that single-handedly.
Thank you. Next to Dan.
Yeah, I think this is a question. So in my work at the fire department, something we're often asked by the fire commission as well, is to find diversity or how we can get a diverse workforce. And we're predominantly a white male workforce. And that, that's not uncommon in the suburban fire departments. And as we, as part of the command staff for the fire department, as we've looked at that question, there's no, there's no easy answer. We do our part. When it comes to staff, you can go out and you can recruit. But, you know, bringing in outside people, it's not uncommon for people in the fire service, and I would imagine probably in education, to tell you they want to work in the community they're from or where people look like them. And so you have, you can't just judge a workforce by, you know, hiring more people of color and say, we're diverse. Diversity comes from getting a diverse workforce and getting people that feel comfortable. And the same holds true for our students. We have work to do to want to. And I think some of that is with the board. And you heard the village, the village board say that they want to work on that. And I think we, as the school board, we're probably not tasked with that. But we are tasked with the school community and, and the greater community at large. And so again, bringing the village board together with us to talk about opportunities that we can take as a community to improve diversity, bring people and find out why people don't want to come here and, and try to make those changes as a community, as one community, so that we can learn from each other and continue to improve.
Thank you. Next to Ann, do you have long-term goals and strategies for increasing the overall diversity among the student body and the employees in the district? And if so, what are they?
So I would hesitate just a minute with regard to I. Do I have hopes that we can do that as a board? Absolutely. But it is a board that's working together. And, and that really is our best strategy, which is a lot of good minds together on the board. I think we've talked about the fact that we have good minds on the board and a lot of experience and a lot of desire to do work and getting outside help from different voices, be the community voices, student voices, expert voices, that's going to be really important in this. I really think that we have an opportunity here to do this work in a way that is different. We may not have every single person in our community that is of color. We know we don't. But that doesn't mean that we can't reach out. We've learned a lot about virtual learning. There are a lot of communities around us that maybe we can reach out to in a different way. Maybe we can't bring people into the seats, but we can certainly bring ourselves someplace else, too. So I really think that if we start to expand what we're thinking about, what kind of collaborations can we create? What sort of virtual learning can we do with other communities so that we can live and go to school and be educated in a way that really our workforce is going to be educated in? We're not going back in person all the time. We will be probably doing remote learning and working in the future in some way, shape or form, in college, in jobs. So using that ability, that virtual ability may be a really good strategy. I don't know yet. But I think we will, as a board and with the community's help, figure that out.
Thank you. And finally, to Pam.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent question. I would say that the district's focus plan has an emphasis on, although it does not state its long-term goal, but respecting the diversity and preparing our students for being citizens in the world. So that means that they need to experience diversity. Our chapter 220 has been one of the main drivers for diversity in our schools. That chapter ended when the legislature eliminated it. We are rolling students out. Capturing new students is challenging. The open enrollment program is not race-based selection. It's lottery. That will not replace those students. So I think that we need to have conversations with the village. And I think as a school board or a school district, it is important for us to make sure that our schools are really good places for any student to come, who, who is able to come into our community and be educated. We want to be a destination school district and a community that's affordable or, or attractive to people that will want to come and educate their students. There are really good stories. I know that there are some sad stories. There's really positive stories about people who have brought their students into our school and have been engaged in the, and the school community. They've been a part of the extracurricular. They have received a really strong education. So we need to tell those stories and we need to continue to further this work.
Thank you. So moving on to question six, we'll go first to Joe. How will you prioritize multicultural awareness, sensitivity, and acceptance in Whitefish Bay schools?
The first way I'd prioritize that would be by making sure schools were open five days a week. There can be no awareness of other cultures if other cultures are separated. There can be no awareness of other cultures if other cultures are separated. And we have been separating our students for an entire year. There are other schools, districts, private and parochial schools with multicultural student bodies that have been open. They have been able to share human contact, human discussion, to talk about issues such as multiculturalism, diversity, racism. It's different when you're in person with someone than it is speaking over a computer to them. Also, there's been a giant inequality of access to quality education that we have caused. We have caused so many problems by what we have done on all these issues from mental health to racial inequality to physical fitness. And we have done nothing. We used to be leaders in this district. The number one district in the state. Why are we following on all these issues?
Thank you. Next to Dan, how will you prioritize multicultural awareness, sensitivity and acceptance in Whitefish Bay schools?
Yeah, I I think that's a really important question, and I think the the board has done some great work. When you look to Maria and the work she's done with curriculum and the work that the board's done through some of their committee work in the curriculum committee. I I think there's more work to be done and curriculum is constantly evolving. And I think that's something that we can look to capitalize on. And again, there there are a plethora of subject matter experts out there that we can or consultants that we can go to to find ways to incorporate multicultural awareness throughout varying curriculum, science, math, social studies, history, I think all of that. And and that's, I think, low-hanging fruit. And I I get that curriculums aren't inexpensive to implement and it takes work to change them. I I think there are also, Anne brings up a great point about capitalizing. And I know we're hearing from some of the candidates that virtual learning is not ideal, but I think we can capitalize on some of that technology that we've put out there now to work through other districts that maybe aren't like us to find out and learn things from them and learn things from their curriculum and make our students more aware of the world. Our job as a board is to educate for academic success. And obviously, along with that comes the extracurriculars and some of that stuff. But we also have a a job of putting high-quality individuals that are excellent members of society out into the world, and that includes learning from all of us and listening.
But thank you. Next to Anne.
We live in a really exciting time. There's so much more material out available on multi multicultural bases in all areas. And I think, you know, we're hearing more about trade reading books. We're hearing more about our history. And we're hearing that this is just a priority with regard to people who are putting together curriculum, and that's great. And there are all the supplemental materials, the more recent materials that are very attractive to students because it's the time they're living in. So we have really excellent educators who are working with that material now, always searching to make sure that it's relevant to their students. And this is extremely relevant. We have a really excellent teaching and learning person, Maria Kacharsky. And we have a curriculum review committee. So I think this is a huge priority. It has been a priority. It will continue to be a priority. The board's role is ensuring that when we give our statements, our our charge, that that it's understood that we really are supportive of this work as we are. And we have courses that are coming to us from the middle school and the high school, making sure that we have a multicultural perspective. And I think we've heard all throughout this, the importance of a racial equity lens on the work that we do throughout multicultural lens. That too has to be part of what we're thinking about. When we do our policy work, when we look at our fiscal situation, all of that has to be taken into account. And that's how it is part of a thread through everything that the school board does.
Thank you. Next to Pam.
Thank you. Multiculturalism has been something that the district has been working on and I'm now working on. It's been a part of our curriculum. And and each subject area has exposure to that. I think the piece is, as a board, we do need to make sure that our students are educated for their future and having an understanding of other, other cultures is very important. It does come through in curriculum, should come through in trade books, it should come through in authentic reading material, engaging reading material. There are just a variety of ways that the district does this. I agree, Maria Kacharsky is very good at this. I think it's something most of our teachers are, have a desire to expose their students to a variety of cultures and experiences. Richard says a wonderful festival of lights that focuses on a variety of cultures. The other piece we need to do though, when you talk about the sensitivity, is to continue to support the work in social emotional learning. That is where we will, we'll get at the core of helping students that might have trouble with the sensitivity issue. We're respecting learning about getting along with other people and supporting other people, respecting other people. So that, as it's embedded in the work in our district, I believe is an important part to making our our students open and sensitive to to other people.
Thank you. And finally, Sandy, how will you prioritize multicultural awareness, sensitivity and acceptance in Whitefish Bay schools?
Well, I would, I would prioritize it near the top in terms of of our culture and what I hope for my students. And I would also say that I'm witnessing it from the conversations that I have with my own kids in terms of things that are happening and things that aren't happening. I know in terms of of embracing people of different genders, gender fluidity, in addition to, you know, people of of different cultures. I hear from my students, the way that they the way that they talk so much more freely about people who think differently and believe differently from them and the way in which I think they are embracing that and the way in which they're questioning places where it's not happening. I'm I'm seeing that reflected, which I think is coming through curriculum and the learning that they're doing and the questions that they're asking about the world around them. And I think the the nature of inquiry that they're getting through school, I'm seeing reflected in the way that they're talking about people of other cultures, people of other experience and their friends as well.
Thank you. So question seven, we'll start with Dan. Concerning COVID-19, how will you keep teachers and students safe through the end of this year and next year? And would you consider retaining a virtual option for vulnerable children?
Yeah, that's, that's a loaded question. So I I think COVID-19 has obviously been at the forefront of everything. And it's no secret if anybody's listened to the board, my public comments, airing on the side of my my professional background, working for the fire department and being in charge of EMS for the fire department in the North Shore and working extremely closely with the health department. I've obviously been privy to some information that even maybe the board doesn't have or has some blinders up for. So I, it's been no secret that my kids have been virtual and I've supported the virtual option all along the way this school year. And I guess personally, I, we're making the decision because we do feel it's, it's safe and it's safer than it certainly has been throughout the rest of the school year to send our own kids back for quarter four and they're, they're extremely excited about going back and seeing their friends and understanding that things look different. But also understanding that it's not just about our kids or our teachers. It's about their family and the community as a whole. And I I do think having a virtual option for those families who maybe haven't had access to the vaccine yet, or for whatever reason can't get the vaccine. I I think it's really important for those families to have the option, whether it's because the family doesn't want the child in the building or there's other reason. And that includes some staff members who just simply have a a risk at home that is out of their control and they're trying to keep their family at home safe. So I do think the virtual option is important. I think the district and the health advisory committee has done a phenomenal job. They've been an incredible asset to us. And I I think honestly, in some form, something that should continue because absenteeism has been way down because they, we've done such a good job of keeping our kids safe.
Thank you. Next to Anne, concerning COVID-19, how will you keep teachers, keep teachers and students safe through the end of this year and next year? And would you consider retaining a virtual option for vulnerable children?
So I think that the vaccine itself has been a game changer. I hope that that's what's moving us out of what has been a really difficult year. Safety has been our priority all year and giving options to people. And those options have been across the board. They've been virtual, they've been hybrid. Now it's four days a week in person. And frankly, some people took the option of leaving the district altogether, which is their choice. So I think really what we're doing for this rest of the semester is giving students and families as many options as we possibly can so that they feel safe, given their situation. It's hard because the vaccine isn't available to younger children. Granted, younger children are not necessarily carriers of the disease, but nonetheless, people have their own family situations to consider. So I think the virtual option certainly now is, has been a necessity. With regard to next year, we're already hearing from experts that there may be some children who can't go back to school. And and we'll have to wait and see, but I think giving options to students and families is going to be really important. But I'd like to emphasize again, what you heard from Sandy Solstein, which is our goal is to have students in school five days a week next year. And if there's an option that needs to be given to students who can't come because of family situations, then, you know, we're committed to giving as many options as we possibly can. As for this year, the rest of this year, we have already made determinations as a board, all of us, that the option of giving four days a week in person is, is what we're going for and that we're providing a virtual option. And we, balancing really difficult factors, think that that's giving people the very best situation we can give them, considering that COVID is still here and that people are working through the vaccine process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Pam.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the, all of our district administrators, the the group of people that worked in the summer, the reopening schools plan, and also our community health advisory committee. They helped us to really look at what we might need to do to open up our schools because we wanted to open our schools. We did open our schools, but we wanted to do it safely. We don't want to harm our, our students and our staff, variety of families with different issues and needs. So balancing all of those left us with a a hybrid option. And now it's moved into a four-day face-to-face instruction, maintaining a virtual option for families who needed that. And we will continue to keep our families safe by using the district protocols that have been developed for risk mitigation. I would believe those will continue in, in the fall. We have a really strong mask policy, which has made our schools a safer place. How long those will need to be in place will depend on the data and input we get from scientists. But I believe, I know we will have five-day in-person in the fall. And then I think that we will back into what we need to provide for a virtual option. I I believe we will need to. But I think that the, the, the thinking is five-day a week. And then finding out what families need a virtual option and then providing the best opportunity for those students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Sandy.
So I want to just take a moment to say that our schools have been open five days a week this entire year. We have had teachers with students in front of them four days a week. We've had an asynchronous day in which students are also in buildings, students who need additional supports. Five days a week, we have been balancing this equation to safely deliver learning to students throughout the year. We have run our athletic seasons. We have ensured that our non-resident students have had transportation so that they can be in our schools. And this has not been an easy balancing act throughout the year. I had someone tell me, for which I was very grateful, that they thought that the school board had made the best decisions that they could at each decision point with the information we had, the information from administrators, the information from our health advisory committee, and the evolving information about this virus, which has really developed throughout the year. And now we have very effective CDC guidelines that we can follow and adhere to. And I do think that we've got our plan to get us through the end of the year. And we are looking forward to five-day-a-week in-person next year. I do agree with the assessment that I think we are going to have some folks who, for whom we're going to have to continue to consider a virtual option. We're going to have to, you know, sort of follow the science here and be able to accommodate what we need for safety, for health and for continued learning.
Thank you. And finally to Joe.
I would keep students safe by letting them all attend school five days a week in person. The studies show that the school environment is safer than the community for students to be in. If there are students with special health risks that need to attend virtually, that should still be an option for them. However, I don't think the virtual option should be prioritized because a lot of the in-person learning has been catered to the virtual environment. So basically, students have been going to school to watch a video of their teacher rather than staying at home to watch a video of their teacher. And I think as far as keeping our kids, kids safe, it's one thing to keep our kids safe from a virus, but there are lots of other things to keep our kids safe from. There's depression. There's isolation. There's drug use. All these numbers have skyrocketed and we're going to be dealing with them for how, who knows how long. There have been lots and lots of schools worldwide and in Wisconsin. Sweden never closed any of their schools and their numbers were fine. In Wisconsin, we've had lots of private, parochial and different districts that have been open five days a week to all students all year. There have been no reports of disaster or or great health calamities. In fact, the studies show that where those schools were open, the spread in the community was more dangerous to kids and teachers and the rest of the population than the people that were in the schools. So it's time to follow the science.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Anne. What will you do to improve communication and transparency in our school district?
This, this too, I think, is sort of a continuous journey for all of us. Communication always is something that we are thinking about. At the school level, that's probably our best opportunity. We have a captive audience and so we have to make sure that we're clear about what information we're giving. But also we have to make sure that we get the information from the families at the school level. So we have PTOs, we have variety of family groups that we can use to get that information that we need and also to to disseminate information. I think we've talked already about having on a variety of topics, a need for some sort of convening of conversations. And I think that that will be really helpful to us to ensure that post-pandemic, we start thinking about and prioritizing and working on all of these issues which are coming all together. The social, emotional issues, making sure that people feel safe in their schools because transition back is not going to be so easy either post-pandemic and making sure that the racial equity, all equity issues that we've been talking about are addressed. And so I think communication has to come from both a community level, from the school board. You know, we certainly are very pleased to have people come and give us public comment. And then from the school level as well, all of these methods of communication are very valuable.
Thank you. Next to Pam, what will you do to improve communication and transparency in our school district?
Communication is something we need to continue to work on. When you think you've gotten better, then you realize that you still need to do more. The piece is to to look for ways to do that, to expand, see where we've been, expand the additional opportunities. I think we have multiple places for two-way communication. So it it depends on what kind of communication you are talking about, but we need all two-way communication. We need to push communication out that makes sure that people understand the decisions we've made. We do have our superintendent and our, we have a school board member on a communications committee. They did a survey. They did a survey, um, and I frankly, they said we were doing pretty well. Um, but do I rest on that? No, I think that there's new ways to communicate. Obviously, um, Zoom meetings and, and technology has improved the ability to communicate. Um, something I'm excited about, I think, is the ability to, um. Expand communication with our families. Um, parent teacher conferences no longer, you know, maybe those will be held virtually like they have been this year. Um, that's a lot of trans, you know, that's a lot of easy dialogue access. So, um, from a district level, I believe we will look to try to expand the way that we can. Make sure that we have clear, concise communication going out. Um, I think the other piece is making sure that we have a culture where people, uh, listen to each other. Um, and communication is welcome.
Thank you. Next to Sandy.
Yeah, I think, um, I think communication too can, um, can always be improved. I was also, um, thinking, I think like Pam was, that we've, we've really had an unprecedented. Opportunity to communicate at board meetings. Um, we, we certainly, uh, the, this summer had a couple of board meetings. Um, where we got, uh, I think over 700 or 800 community members attending, which, um, was amazing. Um, and had an opportunity to be very direct in, um, having community members. See the process of decision-making, get the same information that the board was receiving. Um, and to really have an opportunity to take the journey with us through the pandemic. Um, I think, you know, on an ongoing basis, um, certainly can continue to improve. Um, family communications and communications throughout the district. Um, finding out what people need to know. We, we certainly, um, we certainly find out when we've been unsuccessful in communication. And the trick is to be proactive, to learn from that and, uh, and to continue to improve the communication. Cause when, um, when something doesn't get communicated effectively or efficiently or in a timely manner. Um, you know, we can, we can certainly learn that in a hurry. And so I, I like to think there have been a few occasions where we're continuing to, to learn forward and, uh, can certainly continue to look for ways to improve.
Thank you. And next to Joe, what will you do to improve communication and transparency in our school district?
Um, I would keep the electronic systems in place. I think the email systems, uh, the websites have been very informative and a good way of communicating between. Residents, students, parents, um, faculty, the administration, uh, and the school board. I would look to open up more in-person opportunities, uh, for people to meet with the school board. You know, I for one, if, uh, if elected, I would have an open door policy. If someone ever wanted to speak with me, uh, live and in person, I would be happy to speak with them. Uh, so I think all forms of communication should be opened up, um, including in-person communication. Uh, but as far as the systems that are in place. They can always be, they can always be tweaked and as newer technology comes out, the electronic forms of communication can, can be tweaked. And as far as transparency and, and what's going on. I will always communicate exactly why I make a decision. On a particular issue involving the schools. And I will not shy away from people that have questions for me about a certain decision that I made.
Thank you. And finally to Dan.
Yeah, communication is built on the foundation of trust and transparency. And I think, um, the, a lot has been learned. I personally had some frustrations throughout the school year with, um, maybe the lack of surveys as people asked for surveys. And I think the board probably could only handle so much coming at them at one time. Um, but I, as the year went on, I, I was, um, sometimes demanding of the district to say, hey. We can't be waiting for a modality change to survey where parents want to be. I think we need to communicate where we think we're headed in the next school board meeting and get a survey so that our decisions can be, um. You know, uh, grounded in, in some level of knowledge of what people might be thinking, maybe not a final decision, but what people might be thinking. Um, I think communication, we, we have to, to Joe's point, keep a lot of these electronic means available. I think it's allowed, um, like Sandy said, more, more engagement from the community. And sometimes people aren't able, for whatever reason, to get to that meeting in person. Um, and or to that conference in person. So keeping those modalities, now that we have the technology in place, I think certainly will improve, um, communication for both students, parents. Uh, amongst faculty and the administration and the board. Uh, I still also think it's very important to have a community town hall, um, community forum where there is that open dialogue. And, uh, like Joe, I promise to always have an open door and engage in, um, you know, meaningful conversation back and forth. And, um, a good discussion of, uh, different perspectives and always listen. Um, you may not like my, my decision or agree with me in the end, but I'm certainly willing to listen.
Thank you. Uh, and our last question now, we'll start with Pam. How do you plan to address student mental health as a priority, given the pressure that students are under, especially at the high school?
Excuse me, Julie?
Yes.
Why don't we go a minute on this one?
Okay. So one minute instead of 90 seconds.
Yes.
We're running a little late here. So, so it's a Pam, how do you plan to address student mental health as a priority, given the pressure that students are under, especially at the high school?
Um, well, mental health has been an issue for our students before COVID. It is not unique to Whitefish Bay. Several years ago, we, we realigned our support services in our administration to allocate more resources for student support services. We have a qualified administrator, Dr. Gann, who is running, uh, working with our other support staff. Um, this is a piece of, of the responsibility. Um, but we're not professionals. She is, and, uh, they work with professionals. Um, there are a lot of partnership models for expanding, um, work with mental health. There are mental health grants, the state has made this a priority. I believe we will be accessing those grants to expand programs. And, uh, so I don't know exactly how to do it. I know that it's a priority. I know that we have been working on it. It should continue to be a priority and that I am supportive of the work needed to support and assist students and families to access the right help.
Uh, thank you. Next to Sandy.
So I think, um, I think this is going to be a priority and a, a challenge for us. Um, not just because of modality selections, but just the, um, sort of collective. Challenges that we've all faced as human beings in this unprecedented event, um, it during the pandemic. I think that we are incredibly fortunate in the people that we have in our district, in our staff, in our teachers. Um, and their sensitivity to what's happening with students, their relationship building that I think is going to help to. Um, identify challenges. And I think it's, it's going to take some grace, it's going to take some understanding. Um, on the part of our educators and, um, just trying to work through it together as a supportive community.
Thank you. Uh, next to Joe, how do you plan to address student mental health as a priority, given the pressure that students are under, especially at the high school?
Uh, the first thing I would do is as soon as possible, make sure that all students were able to attend class in person five days a week. I think that is one of the greatest mental health challenges that they are facing. And it was brought on to them by the decisions that we made. I also would try to reduce the atmosphere of fear that they have been living under. Uh, try and present them with the data that shows that they are safe, the school is safe. It's a dangerous. Pathogen that we have faced, but they are extremely low risk. The school environment is extremely low risk. They can join with their friends in extracurricular activities. And be human again.
Thank you. Next to Dan.
I think there's no doubt that, um, mental health is something facing the entire community, um, including our students. I think we can start with, um, engaging a system that's been proven through the CDC, through the youth, youth behavior, risk behavior survey. Um, something that DPI supports and being able to sort of survey our students. I know that, uh, through some of the board meetings and some of the surveys that were done with the students. We found that some of the students didn't feel like they had, um, a, a comfortable or approachable adult. And that's something that the, the district made a priority to engage those students and find out, uh, why they didn't feel that way. And I think that's something that needs to continue and unfortunately, um, likely something we're going to see numbers increase. So I, I think developing a plan with some of our internal professionals and maybe even considering some of our external stakeholders. So we're a community that has access to a number of great professionals, much like the health advisory committee. I think there's an opportunity to convene a committee of knowledgeable professionals in the committee, com- community who, um, can help guide our path.
Thank you. And finally to Anne.
This absolutely has to be a priority for us. I think it really involves both reaching out and supporting. Um, we do have excellent professionals in our schools, um, counselors, um, you know, but really, you know, making sure that every single touch with a student is one. That takes into account, um, how they're doing, um, with the world that they live in, whatever that world looks like. Um, so having teachers reach out and make sure that there's a connection between a student and a teacher. Um, making sure that students themselves have the opportunities, I think Joe mentioned that, um, for extracurricular activities and sports. All of that will help, um, but it won't be enough. And so then the question is, how can we help families and community also support this work? Last week, or I think within the last week and a half, there was, um, a very well-done presentation given to families in the district. So I think providing resources to families so that they can, um, do this work as well is going to be important. So this is community-wide work. We have a really huge part of that. Um, but I personally am not a social, uh, I am not a, uh, person who can deal with mental health as a professional, but certainly. Resources, making sure they get to where they need to be is important and we can do that.
Thank you. So now we will have 60 seconds for each candidate's closing remarks and we will begin with Sandy.
Make sure I'm unmuted. Hi, so I want to, um, thank again Bay Bridge League of Women Voters. Um, thank Julie and thank Hulan for, um, helping shepherd us through this evening. Um, and I want to thank all of the candidates, um, following this, um. Tumultuous year, um, for all of the candidates to step up and, um, show a willingness to serve in this way. Um, I really, really appreciate all of you being here. It has been a challenging year, um, trying to make the best possible decisions, um, in imperfect choices. Um, there are more difficult decisions ahead and, um, I think that we, um, have some trust to. To rebuild, uh, to work together with multiple stakeholders, with our teachers, our administrators, our families, our community. Um, I am, uh, feeling a lot of hope for renewal and recovery. And it would be a privilege if I had the opportunity to continue to serve, um, and to move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Joe.
I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters and Bay Bridge and all the other candidates and everybody that tuned in to listen tonight. Um. I firmly believe that we missed an opportunity to lead as we always have during the course of this. We chose a course of fear and trepidation. And if we would have educated ourselves. We would have known that the best, safest place for our children to be would have been in school five days a week since September. I will fight tirelessly to make sure that that happens if I'm elected. And I'll make sure that in the future, in similar circumstances. We do the research on the data to make the proper choices for our children because they only get one chance at a childhood. And I fear it might be too late for some of them by what we've already done.
Thank you. Next to Dan.
Also echo, um, my thanks to the League of Women Voters and Bay Bridge. Um, Julie, thanks for moderating and, uh, Hulan, you probably had the hardest job holding up cards all night. Your arms are probably exhausted. Um, so thank you. I, I definitely appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate everybody who's reached out, um, to the, the current board. Thank you very much for your work. Um, I know it probably many times felt like a thankless job listening to us, uh, go after you. Uh, till the, the good news being this is probably the earliest you'll get off of a Zoom meeting that you've had in a while. Um, but thank you for your work. I, I promise to work tirelessly and always have an open ear. Um, leading up to the election, I know these were questions submitted by the community. Maybe your question wasn't answered. Um, I'd encourage the community to reach out to me for, um, answers to questions that may be leading to the polls you still have questions about. And I promise to keep that open ear and, uh, help educate our kids and, um, lead them out into the community as successful. Uh, members of our community.
Thank you. Next is Anne.
Thank you for the chance to speak with you this evening. Um, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Bay Bridge, as well as the community members who are here tonight. Let me close by saying that I am very invested in our district, as are so many of our students and our families. We can work together to make things better in the lives of our students. Um, I have, we all have ideas about what we can do as we move forward. And now we need to translate those ideas into action. Um, and I would appreciate the opportunity to consider, continue serving on the board to do so. Um, email seems to be a really good way for people to give information and to ask questions. So I would encourage you to continue doing that. Um, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally Pam.
Thank you. Uh, I would reiterate my thank you to the League of Women Voters, Bay Bridge and fellow candidates. Um, I know we've talked a lot about this year, but I have to say, I am proud to be a part of Whitefish Bay's reputation as a high-quality school district. And while Whitefish Bay has gained in reputation as a place to learn and a place to work over my tenure. There is more to do to ensure we are a leader in K-12 education. There will be healing and coming back together as we go back into our schools five days a week in the fall. Um, steady leadership and expertise is required as we move beyond this year. I have been leading for improvements and of a forward thinker. I am accessible to all, I'm always open. I lead with integrity. Um, I have a commitment to academic excellence, equity for all, fiscal responsibility, accountability, responsiveness. Um, I'm eager to continue the work to advance educational opportunities for all students. And I promote the urgent work of equity. I ask for your, uh, thank you for your continued support and trust. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the school board portion of our forum event this evening, this afternoon, oh, this evening. Thank you to the community for your questions and thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum. And for running for a position on the Whitefish Bay School Board. Thank you to each of you, Anne Kearney, Joe Ketchum, Sandy Saltstein, Dan Tyke and Pam Woodard. That concludes our candidate forum event. On behalf of Bay Bridge and the League of Women Voters, Milwaukee County, thank you to our candidates for taking the time to run for political office. And for participating in this forum. And thanks to all of you who are viewing this important event. As a reminder, the election will be held April 6th. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And with proper documentation, you may still register when you go to vote. You may cast an in-person absentee ballot at the village hall from March 23rd to April 2nd. From 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM and until 5:00 PM on April 2nd. The last day to request an absentee ballot is April 1st by 5:00 PM. A white drop box for absentee ballots is located in the village hall by the front doors. The last pickup is 8:00 PM on election night. Voters will be required to show a photo ID in order to vote. Information on voting and elections can be found at vote411.org. And at the League of Women Voters Milwaukee County website and at the Bay Bridge, Wisconsin website. Please visit the vote411.org website to view your sample ballot, information on your candidates. And a detailed question and answer session. The Q and A section will allow you to directly compare your candidates. We want your vote to count, so please let us know if you have questions. The League of Women Voters reminds you that our democracy depends on citizen involvement. I trust that you all intend to vote on April 6th and hope that you will help increase voter turnout by encouraging your friends to vote as well. Thank you and have a good evening.